Good evening, everybody. It is 5:30. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the City Council. The City Council serving as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency board for March 6, 2018. This is our 5:30 PM presentation period. We only have one presentation tonight, and that's by our Human Rights Committee. Well, we're trying to form the Human Rights Committee again. And I have had the pleasure of meeting Gary. He came into my office almost a year ago, and we started talking about things that he's accomplished in his life and things that he'd like to move forth on. And human rights has been talked about in our community many times. We tried to have a committee one time that kind of fell apart. And so, he has a presentation he'd like to make to the City Council this time without just appointing it and putting members on it and trying to move forward. We actually talked about having the council look at the direction and actually formalize it in the future. So with that, I will give the mic to Mr. Gardner.
There we go. Good evening. As the mayor said, my name's Gary Gardner. I've met and spoken with almost all of you one time or another on more than one occasion, and I'm very flattered and honored that the mayor had asked me to take this project on and try to get it up and running again. And it'll be a challenge, but I think we have a good thing in the foundation that we have here now, and that's what I'd like to talk to you about today. There we go. And just go over briefly where we're at in the process and where you all as council members can help and chip in, and what our goals and procedures and structure are going to be. Now, the mayor and I talked about this, and I know there's been some history in the city of a previous effort at this. And we talked about what was good, what was not good, and how best to proceed. And we have a bit of a challenge and a blessing here in the city. We live in a state where the state has already adopted a plethora of laws, rules, and regulations governing human rights and civil rights for all of its citizens, no matter where they live in the state. And the California existing law, the California Civil Rights Act, states, "All persons within the jurisdiction of the state are free and equal, and no matter what their sex, race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, disability, medical condition, genetic information, marital status, sexual orientation, citizenship, primary language, or immigration status," try and say that with one breath, "are entitled to the full and equal accommodations, advantages, facilities, privileges, or services in all business establishments of every kind whatsoever." All of these laws are enforced currently by the Department of Fair Employment and Housing and the state agency which is charged with enforcing those laws. And the mission of that department is to protect the people of California from unlawful discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodations, and from hate violence and human trafficking, which are all of the areas that you would see covered in a city-level Human Rights Commission. And so, in looking at that and realizing we didn't want to duplicate the efforts of the state while at the same time offering the citizens of Desert Hot Springs the ability to enforce these laws without also taking resources from the city where we already have very limited resources, and our police and our legal system here is stretched rather thin, and we know they have a lot of other priorities, to develop a committee to deal with this was a bit of a challenge. So what our proposed Mayor's Committee on Human Rights is going to do is going to be an educational resource to assist residents and businesses of the city in understanding their rights and obligations under the Civil Rights Act of the state, assist businesses in complying with those laws, assist residents in overcoming discrimination within the city if, and if needed, in filing complaints with the California Department of Fair Housing and Employment, and report back to the mayor and City Council any concerns raised by residents of DHS about discrimination in the city and suggested policy and procedure changes if they are warranted. So this way, we're acting as kind of an overlap with the state's existing laws and state's existing rules and regulations and enforcement mechanisms without stretching the resources of this city any thinner than they already are. So our structure that we developed, we're looking at a five-member committee under the jurisdiction of the office of the mayor, with a chair appointed by the mayor, members chosen by the chair with the approval of the mayor, terms to run concurrent with the mayor's elective term, and meetings held at least quarterly or as needed in a city Right now, we've got our basic structure in place. We have some walls around our budding foundation, if you will. But our next steps are begin seeking committee members. And we'd take recommendations from the council, and I would look to you guys to help us with that. A couple of weeks or a month or so, I guess, Councilmember McKee had commented at a City Council meeting of the number of people that applied for council and board positions and how well-qualified they were, and the plethora of them that you had, and it was a shame that we couldn't find places for them. And well, that's going to be the first pile, I think, that we're going to delve into and assess their interest and their qualifications and if they want to serve on this. We'll seek input and recommendations from community leaders and organizations as well, and any interested citizens. We'll sit down and review those and make recommendations for the four other council positions to the mayor, hopefully by mid-April. And we're looking at holding the first meeting in May. So our initial possible committee projects that we've looked at, one of the first things I think that would be a helpful thing for the city to have and for this committee to tackle would be to develop a brochure that can be given to residents and businesses in DHS reaffirming the city's commitment to nondiscrimination and outlining the existing state civil rights laws and resources and places for them to get help with that. And it can be included in any of the packages of information that this chamber has or that the city gives out to new residents and things like that. And I think as well, our next project would be to develop an educational program that can be given to places in the community by committee members, by the mayor, by the City Council members, places in the schools, community groups that are discussing discrimination issues, civil rights laws, and where people can get help with enforcing or complying with California's laws. So I think our committee would develop something that you all can use when you go to various meetings. We can take out to the schools and use and go from there. Now, what the Mayor's Committee on Human Rights is not, I think, is something that we need to look at and is, I think, is very important. The mayor and I, when we were working on this, we don't view this as a gotcha patrol. I don't see us going out and going into businesses and intentionally going, "No, you guys got to do that. You can't do this. You can't do that." This is not what this is going to be. It's not an enforcement organization. We don't have the tools in this city to go out and be able to enforce that. And it's not a compliance arbitrator, and it won't be an advocacy group for any particular community segment or group, or an adjudicator of disputes. What the Mayor's Committee on Human Resources is going to be, a resource for businesses in DHS to understand their obligations under California's civil rights laws, a resource for the residents of DHS to understand their rights and in help in filing complaints if needed, a body that can gather input from residents and businesses and make policy recommendations to you all, and a source for educational programs and information for civic and school groups seeking ways to understand the law and to combat discrimination in the city. That's what the committee will be. So what's next? While the committee falls under the jurisdiction of the mayor's office, it serves the entire city, and as such welcomes feedback and input and suggestions of possible members, projects to focus on from the City Council, from city staff, from any interested resident or group. And we're working on some more formal contact mechanisms, either through the city's webpage or email system. But in the interim, anybody that's interested in getting involved, wants to be on, wants to serve, and somehow can contact either myself or the mayor's office. And my email address is up there on the slides now, and most all of you have that anyway. If you have interested citizens that want to be a part of this, they're certainly welcome to contact me as we delve into this. So that's where we're at today. I'd be glad to answer any questions you all have or go forth with any suggestions, blessings, curses, whatever.
I appreciate your time, Gary, and for what you've put into this. Again, I just met Gary last year, and we talked about some of the things I'd like to see for our community in the future, and he kind of put this all together, asked my opinions on a few things. I know he's met with most of you, if not all of you, on the direction we want to go with this. So he's kind of put it together from a collaboration of thoughts from this whole City Council. Mr. McKee, any comments?
I've got sort of a concern, I think. If we're going to have an organization in the city that is expressing what a business or organization or person needs to do to comply with various California state laws, let's say they go into a business and say, "This is something we believe you should deal with." I don't know what I would say in that. But then the state comes in and gives them a different view of what they should do, especially considering, my view is, there's going to have to be a heck of a lot of training here by our legal staff to make sure when you go into a particular business that you're not giving them incorrect information. So I'm just concerned about that, is the fact that we may be giving our view of something, and then the state come in and say, "No, that's not what we were talking about." What sort of legal liability does that put us in, that we've basically told them, "You're okay here," and the state comes in and says, "No, you're not."
Mr. Gardner?
Councilmember McKee, I hear exactly what you're saying, and I share with you that concern. And perhaps I rushed through this presentation enough without giving, being as explicit as I should be on that. I don't see this, like I said, in what this committee is not, is not an arbitrator, it is not an enforcer. What I would envision is that if a business had a question, they would come to us. We would work with them and the California Department in getting the correct information to them. I don't see myself or anybody on the committee giving legal advice without directly consulting anybody, and I see us working as an agent with the California Department as well as the city attorney and you all when we do that.
I'm just saying that that's something that a relationship is something you have to be very cautious with.
Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Vaughn?
Well, before I go, I think you wanted, I think our city attorney wanted to come out. Were you coming? No? Okay. She was nodding, so I was like, "I don't know, do you want to say something?" I think it's great. I mean, I would feel more comfortable if you go to a business when and if they call you, as opposed to just like dropping in and then starting to say, "Hey, by the way, we're at the mayor's office," and, you know, because that kind of can make people feel like, "Whoa, whoa, what's going on?" You know? I know that it's not like you have citation abilities or anything like that, but, you know, it just puts people a little bit on edge. So, yeah, as long as you're doing it when people call you to come in, then I think that's fine.
Yes, councilmembers of all, I again completely agree with you. And like we said, in what this committee is not, it is not a gotcha. I don't, that is not the role of this committee, that is not what the mayor and I discussed when we were putting this together. I don't see us going out with a hat in hand and going, you know, "Business A, you're not doing this." If business decides to call us and say, "Look, hey, we've had some people complain, we've had some people raise concerns, can you help us?" That's where we'll go there and work with them and the California Department at the same time.
Ms. Parks?
Yeah, I thought it was very, very clear in his presentation that he was not, the committee was not going to be proactive but reactive, and only reacting to inquiries from residents or businesses asking questions. And so, they're not going to go out and say, "Hey, you know, you're doing, you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing." Now, but if they come to him or to the committee and ask a question, then he will then either refer him to the proper agency or check with that agency himself and try to provide the information. But I thought it was quite clear in his presentation that this was not proactive but reactive.
Councilmember Parks, I appreciate that. And the one area where I would see us somewhat being proactive, a little bit off from that, would be developing presentations that we can take out to schools and civic groups and stuff that would be saying, you know, "Here's how you can help combat discrimination. Here's what to do when you see it." So I think that is a very proactive thing that this committee would be doing. But as far as going towards a business or somebody, that would definitely be, yes.
It's not enforcement.
Exactly. Mm-hmm.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. A while back, we had a group that was very knowledgeable in housing issues, and every once in a while, I'd get a call, you get these calls as councilmembers, where, "Do you know anybody has a moving van? My landlord told me I have to be out tomorrow." And so, you know, they sent him a nice-looking official paper, and I guess if somebody believed it, you know, they'd race to get a moving van. And so, I'd contact them, and they'd come and look at it and let the person know that, you know, what their rights were and help them to be looked after. And so, it was very helpful. And I think part of this is you're going to be feeling your way through this as you're doing it, and so I'm comfortable with the situation here, and, you know, anxious to see this take place. Looking to have a resource where I can go if I want to get a call like this. But I don't want to see, obviously, and I think we had this conversation before, was a while back, we had somebody got a little overzealous, walked into a business and said, "What's your LGBT policy?" to an ordinary employee just sitting at a desk. And they said, "What?" I mean, it's like out of the blue. And so, he's going, "What? I don't, you know, I'm here to make reservations for the, you know, bookings for whatever, rooms or something." And so, then it turned to this big thing all over the social media about, "Oh, they didn't even understand." And I mean, it was just way out of hand, somebody just way over the board, over top. And I don't want to see that stuff getting going, so. We had that conversation before.
California does have quite a body of law dealing with renters' rights and things like that. That, I'll be honest with you, is not something that I think the mayor and I had considered when we were looking at this, but it is something we can add to. I've been taking some notes here while you were talking.
I was just trying to use that as an example, saying that if you had that good thing, that's fine.
Yeah, and I think that's value, there's a lot of value in that as well, because that is something. We do have a lot of rentals in this city, and I think acting, combining and adding that function to this committee is something we can certainly explore. And that's one of the reasons we're bringing this to you today, is to get feedback, just like that.
Part of that effort wasn't just to help the lowly renters. The landlords were getting picked on too, is a pretty balanced approach.
Oh, you can't please one without making somebody else mad. That's politics, right? So...
Well, I appreciate all the hard work you put into this. I really wanted this presentation to be given to the City Council. City Council could buy and give their opinions to you. Doesn't stop any City Council member from starting a committee on anything, but it's always good to have the City Council working unified on the same direction. So I think you took the comments to heart. We'll work on forming the committee and formalizing it towards the next couple of months and going from there. Anything else you'd like to add?
All right, sounds good. Thank you all.
I appreciate it. Thank you all for all the hard work, Gary. We don't have public comments on these items. We will have public comments at 6 o'clock in a general item. If you need to talk to Gary directly about human rights, I'm sure he'll be here. We're going to recess for the next 12 minutes till 6 o'clock, so we'll be in recess.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you could find your seats, we're going to get started. It is 6 o'clock. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the City Council. The City Council serving as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency board for March 6, 2018. serving as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency board for March 6, 2018, 6:00 PM. This is our regular session here at the City Council Chambers in the Carl May Center. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember McKee.
Present.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temzavala.
Present.
And Mayor Mattis.
Present. At this time, we are going to have, is there anybody that would like to give an invocation tonight? We usually, used to have the pastors do this, but they weren't, they're not available to us anymore, and I offered to council members and the public, if there's anybody that would like to give an invocation, they may. I see nobody coming forth. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. We'll have Troop 1606 to present the colors. And again, thank you to Troop 1606 for your service. At this time, we'll have a report of closed session by the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have no reportable items this evening.
Proof of the agenda at this time, the City Council will approve the agenda, including the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. I see nobody in the queue for discussion. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Public comments at this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the City Council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment, portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the City Council and should to be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. My first public speaker is Diane Fitz-Kline, followed by Donna Wardine. Yes, please. The mic, you can push the button at the bottom of the mic, or the city clerk will turn it on for you. You pull the mic up close to you, and you're all set. Your three minutes starts when you start.
I've never been to one of these council meetings, so I'm not sure exactly what I'm supposed to do. But I, the complaint that I have is, or the concern that I have, is the water use, and they're talking so much about, in California, about us not having enough water, they're going to be fining us if we use too much water, or for various things we will no longer be able to do. We're in a drought, and I understand that we have to be very careful with water. However, your city has allowed companies from other countries to come in here and start very large agricultural concerns, which is marijuana, and it's a kind of a subco, a tropical plant, and it uses a lot of water. And I wonder where you're going to get the water? Because if you start using all the water in, in the underground well, or water that we have, it's going to dry it up, and it's going to ruin this, us city, a lot of things that the city people do, which is have spas, hot water spas, and we have some palm oases that are millions of years old, and they're going to go dry, because there won't be any underground water if you take it out and give it all to these marijuana plants. So I don't understand, I understand that you're going to make a lot of money, you know, and it's great, and I'm all for it. Millions you can make, fantastic. And I don't use marijuana or drugs, never have. I've been a schoolteacher for thirty years, and so it does, but I understand that it's legal in California, so it's going to be able to be done. But you're using water that I don't think you can spare, and I'd like to know how you're going to use, get the water to be able to finance, or to give all these plants, make an agricultural community out of a dry desert. I don't understand it, and I'd like to know, I'd like to have some kind of an answer, because it really bothers me, you know, that, that our underground, you know, water is going to be gone, and the hot water wells, everything's going to be gone. So I understand the golf courses use recycled water, and I don't know whether you can do that with marijuana plants and give them the nutrients that they need, you know, to be able to grow top quality, top quality product. So can somebody in, in the group tell me where the water's going to come from? I couldn't find out. I went to other offices to find out, and they couldn't tell me, and they said to come here. So that's why.
Unfortunately, we can't have a back and forth conversation with you during public comments, but what I am going to ask you to do, Ms. Klein, right here. Ms. Klein.
Oh.
Right here in front of you.
Oh, okay.
We can't have a back and forth conversation with you under public comments, it's the state of California's laws, but we're going to have you step to the side. One of our city staff members will take your questions and direct you into the right direction. Mission Springs Water District does serve for the water agency, and maybe they can help you with some of your questions, and then maybe our staff can also.
Okay.
So I'm going to have you step over here. Dory Williams will help you with that. Our next speaker is Donna Wardine, followed by Eddie Johnson.
Hi, my name is Donna Wardine. I've lived in Desert Hot Springs nineteen years, and I am a property owner. I've spoken a couple of months in a row regarding the February 22 Riverside County Fairgrounds honoring Edward G. Johnson, Purple Heart Combat Wounded Vietnam Veteran. So I went, what an event. The, there were eight Riverside County Fair Board members on this stage. There were proclamations and awards given by Raul Ruiz, Manuel V. Perez, Mayor Scott Mattis, thank you for being there, Senator, State Senator Jeff Stone, State Assemblyman Eduardo Garcia, and the Palm Springs Cruising Association President Ross McMullin also made some comments. Mayor Yvonne Parks was there, Sharon Hip, Mike Picardi, and a few others. But I was amazed and shocked at how few people really came. I was expecting more. And it was very professionally done, and then I heard in the background, Ed D., Ed D., Ed D., Ed D., and it was an amazing chant in honor of Ed. Item number two, I was at the veteran park today, showing a friend the park and giving her a tour. She's purchasing a tile in memory of her husband, I'm purchasing one in memory of my husband. There are other council members who also have purchased tiles, and I'm also getting one in honor of my cousin, a retired U.S. Navy lifer. So I got to thinking, because Edward Johnson such, sets such a high standard of caring about his park, our veterans, because he has recognized countywide, setting a high example for our city, I think it would be fitting and stellar to name our park, Veteran Park, the Edward G. Johnson Veteran Park of Desert Hot Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Eddie Johnson, followed by Irene Rodriguez.
My name's Edward Johnson, Desert Hot Springs resident. Let's speak a little bit about the veterans' park that I'm taking care of. We're moving along pretty good with getting tiles, we're getting a lot more orders and forms done, and when this is all completed, the people that turn in DD-214s, we'll have them returned after we, like I say, with the engraving's been done and everything's been complete, so these people won't have to sweat not getting their DD-214 discharge papers back. Also about the event on the 22nd, Yvonne Parks, again, you showed up again. I just gave you a POW MIA pen, appreciate it and say thank you very much for coming. Every time I do something, you're there to support me, and I love you for that. I love all the residents that showed up and supported me on that event. That was quite a thing. That was quite an honor for me. Wow, what can I say, the county, and the county fair, first time in seventy-two years I've ever done this, and I represented also with the veterans, Desert Hot Springs, too. So thank you all very much, all the residents, the city officials that came and supported that, and I'm sorry about the parking, but I got free parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eddie. Irene Rodriguez, followed by Judy Shay.
Good evening, Mayor, I'm city council. I just want to sort of give you a little update about the Cabot's Polo Museum. About almost two weeks ago, we actually redesigned and went live with our new website, so you see sort of the, just the cover of it. We have a moment, come and check it out. It's really very contemporary looking. Let me see. I want to let you know some of our cultural weekends that we had. We have Oaxaca Weekend in January, last, a couple of weeks ago, we had Mat Ortiz. So you see, over the three-day weekend, we almost had six hundred people visit the Cabot's Polo Museum, and then we have another one this weekend with the Hopi Indians coming to our Kachina carving. So if you have a moment, come this weekend, it should be a beautiful weekend as well. Something that really stresses me throughout the weekend for Mat Ortiz, we have fireings, and, but the potters are really experienced, they, this is what they do every day of their life, and so I wanted to show you what happens with the fireings, how they put the pot, and how they actually turns out, and this particular pot was also auctioned off to the visitors, and we had a lucky winner. Also, the program, a school program for people who make a difference. Last year, we went to one school. This year, we're going to the five different elementary schools here in Desert Hot Springs. So to this point, we actually have served about five hundred second graders in Desert Hot Springs. We're serving Julius Crissini this week. Next week, we have Family Night, where every second grader and their families come into the pueblo. We have sort of low attendance, but what, it's amazing is that these families are learning that they have a museum in their town, which is really exciting, and they're so excited to be there, and they love to hang out at the museum as well. To date, we have had a little over ten thousand people visit the museum, and out of those ten thousand, we have a little over fifteen to hundred actually participate on a tour, which is really amazing for us. All these numbers are increasing. When we look in our numbers, even though total visitations were a little down this year, at two point, our museum tours are increasing, which means a little more revenue for us. And then I guess a little reminder, we have Evening at the Pueblo. Hope you could really join us, mark the date, May the nineteenth, at 6:00 PM. It should be a wonderful evening and really magical. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Judy Shay, followed by Becky Hill.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, I got a few different items. Human Rights Campaign, yeah, I was part of that a number of years ago. I just went to a workshop on it with the Human Rights Campaign group. It was like a two, three-hour presentation and educational, and there were some things that I understand that we definitely need to educate everybody, okay, including internally. I had a few issues regarding that, the senior center, okay? They need some hand railings on the entranceway. When it's real windy, some of these folks are very fragile, and the wind almost picks them up, and they're not on a broom or anything. So we really need some handrails. That'd be great. Oh, you know what? I went, I had to walk across the street to go to Taco Bell from Chase, and guess what? I only got halfway across, and the light changed, or the, the little thing saying, stop, and I'm like, whoa. And then when I was waiting for the traffic to clear, okay, there's a man in a wheelchair, and he was moving along okay, but it changed halfway through. So there's something that's got to be done with the timing on, on those lights. Please. Oh, that is, yeah. I, I should have ran, right? Yeah, right. Okay, the fashion show's on Sunday. If you don't have a ticket, please get one. It's our, well, we, we celebrated our sixty-fifth anniversary at the Women's Club today, and our theme was St. Patrick's Day, and we did have, you know, the good old corned beef and cabbage, which I didn't make, and I felt kind of like, I've always made it, you know, but it, it sufficed. It wasn't as good as mine, though, and my brother's. So anyway, that's why I decided not to change. This came actually from Ireland, when I went there with my cousin. The VA Center's coming right along. We had all our permits, we got our approvals, we got our inspections. So hopefully, in the very near future, next day or two, we will have our tag removed and get our occupancy certificate. So, and it's only six veterans, period, and just looking to the future to help these vets. You know, we all talk about helping the vets, well, this is a good way to do it. And unfortunately, in the state of California, I haven't received a dime on my GoFundMe, so I don't understand that quite. I got some from Chicago, from Colorado, and from Florida, but not a dime from Chicago, I mean, from California. And if we get into something, after the five inspectors came yesterday, I haven't got the results of their inspection, but if we get into something that's too deep in my pockets, I may have to ask about community development block grant funds. It's right here that says that.
Thanks, Miss Shay. You have three minutes.
It's applicable. Thank you.
Becky Hill, followed by Mark Silver. Mark Silver is the last card I have. Anybody here that wants to fill out a blue card to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, please do so. Now this is the second call. Becky, would you bring us to eat?
Not a thing.
Darn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I wanted to start out by saying, first off, my partner and I have lived here in DHS for thirteen years, and I've never been more proud of our city, our police chief, our mayor, all your help. We appreciate the direction we're going in. I came this evening because I've reached a point in my life where I'm looking at different opportunities going around for self-improvement, and I've been playing with the idea of the possibility of a food truck, perhaps. So I called the City of Desert Hot Springs and asked what our ordinance was, and they said there is no ordinance, they're not allowed. So I said, how do we get that conversation started? And she said, come to this meeting, this meeting, so I came to this meeting, to just throw it out there, to see, get the ball rolling and the conversation started about it. And a nice lady pointed me to somebody I might want to talk to, so I think that's sort of, I'm going to take care of it that way, but I just wanted to put it out there. For heaven's sakes, I'm not a city-active type person, but I am on social media, and with the Taco Bell, just imagine if we had a food truck coming through. You know, our, our city is under such great change right now. We have a lot of good things in our future coming, and we're constantly changing. So I think the more opportunities available to our residents, whether it be for a, a job or a career change, or just getting some different exciting foods in our city. So that's all I wanted to do, is just start the conversation about food trucks.
This is the right place to start that, so we'll get staff to lead you in the right direction with some staff, and then we'll talk about, possibly bring it back for a discussion.
Sounds great. Thank you so much for your time.
Only if you bring food next time.
You know?
No, I'm joking, I'm joking.
I should have. I did some great cooking today, too, Mr. Mayor.
I bet you did. All right, I have Mark Silver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and Roberta, for helping me, you know, fill out the paperwork. I'm a manufacturer of edibles, and there are no manufacturing facilities in the entire Coachella Valley. I want to be the first. I'm not a cultivator, I'm not a dispensary. I've been in business for nine years, making edibles, safe manufactured edibles, which all myself has been tested and confirmed, and won many awards the last five years. This picture here is my grandmother. She is on all of my products. I found a location here in Palm, in, in Desert Hot Springs, in the St. Brother Shopping Center, where a bakery was going to expand, and they stopped, but the bare bones are there, and it'd be perfect for a kitchen. I'm not open to the public, so I don't know where I stand as being a cultivator or a, a, a dispensary. I'm neither one of those. I'm a manufacturer, and I sell to them. My problem is, is that with the new regulations... My problem is, is that with the new regulations, which was supposed to help the small people like me, it's not. It's pushing the small people like me, and I'm just me. I'm not a corporation. I'm not an LLC. I'm not from, out of state. I'm a native-born, five-generation Californian, and I live here. And I want to continue my business. The location I found, I'm not sure if it's zoned, so I'm trying to find out if we are able to increase the zone for people like me, for me, because this is my life. You know, I started this business helping a cancer patient who was a friend of mine in high school. She had cancer. I sent her some cookies. She is now cancer-free after 10 years. This is why I got into my business, and I need help. I want to find, I need to be in a place where I'm zoned, where I can get my local permit and then my state permit, because it has affected me big time with the new regulations. And there's a lot of problems with that, and I understand it, but it's just me. I do everything myself. So I'm hoping that in this zone, maybe can expand. I'm not open to the public, so I'm not going to be a storefront. Not yet. My goal was, nine years ago, is maybe having a bakery storefront someday, maybe. But right now, I just want to keep doing what I'm doing.
Mr. Silver, I'd like you to meet with, I know you've met Ms. Cernick over there. Maybe Ms. Williams can help you also, and just make sure they got your information, so we can get you some answers on that.
Okay.
And then, did you guys get Ms. Hill information she needed, so she can meet with whoever she needs to meet with? Yes, sir?
I have some comments at my portion here for Ms. Hill.
Okay. And then, so go ahead and go off to the side here, they'll get your information, lead you in the right direction.
I appreciate your time.
Ms. Wardine, you already spoke. I would have to reopen it to everybody to have more time. Is this something very, very, very...
It's very short. It's very short.
Go ahead.
Somebody spoke this evening and reminded me of a horrid experience I had. People who are impaired, sight impaired, or physically impaired have a need to move about after dark, when the sun goes down. And I know this, because coming home from the fair before I had eye surgery, I couldn't see. It was like following other cars, not too fast, stay in the lane. And a fella comes, I'm at stop, trying to get on Palm Drive, and a fella comes in electric wheelchair, dressed in black, black wheelchair, night, unlit street, comes right down by me and goes right out on Palm Drive, crossing Palm Drive. And I went, "Oh, my God, that's how it happens. People die. People are always getting hit." I don't know, but I'm going to start inquiring about what Desert Hot Springs rules and regs are regarding reflectors or lights on moving chairs.
Okay. I appreciate your comments. Just remember, you got to get it under your three minutes, so whenever you speak, because then I have to open it back up to everybody to have extra comment time, so...
Thank you, sir. I accept your admonishment.
Can you see us clearly? Can you see us clearly?
Yes, sir.
Donna just had cataract surgery.
Yes, I have.
So she can see us clearly now. Thank you very much.
I'm half there. Thanks.
All right. With that said, we're going to move on to City Manager's Report. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, Danny, actually, it's out of our jurisdiction to put reflectors and things of that nature, require reflectors and such on wheelchairs. That is something that the state would require the federal government. But Danny, can you talk a little bit about our grant funding that's going to be placing some additional traffic signals and lighting and pedestrian walkways along Palm Drive?
Sure. We currently are working on the design, engineering design, and actually, one of them's on the agenda tonight. But Palm Drive is our main focus. It has been a main focus, I think, of City Council and of the city for the last few years. We currently are completing the Safety Systematic Analysis Report for the Palm Drive corridor, which will identify safety needs from the I-10 all the way to Mission Lakes. Safety needs that, based on accidents. So let's say, for example, one intersection, I think it's going to be 34, over 30 intersections. So one intersection, let's say there's a lot of left-turn accidents, then that report would say, "Hey, there's something needed here to address the left-turn accidents. Maybe it'll be a median, maybe it'll be a crosswalk, et cetera." We are about 80% done. We hope to finish that in April, May, where we will then apply for federal grants to implement some of those infrastructures. Ahead of that, we are currently in engineering design for, we're about to go into engineering design, if approved by council tonight, for streetlights along Palm Drive from Comino Campanero all the way to Two Bunch Palms. There's going to be 24 streetlights. There's also going to be bike lane, a buffered bike lane, flashing beacons on the bus stops, a raised median at the Comino Campanero traffic signal, and additional signage and warning signs throughout Palm Drive. We were also awarded another $2 million from the Sebag Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Grant for Palm Drive, which would extend the streetlights from Two Bunch Palms all the way up to Palm, I'm sorry, Pearson, and then another, I think, 22 streetlights, signages, bike lanes, and four traffic signals to help in between the existing traffic signals, so residents don't have to walk too far to actually cross at a controlled intersection. So we are moving along and doing a lot of safety improvements along Palm Drive in various areas of the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. And for the council's information, we've already provided to Ms. Hill. We do have, of course, our city attorney immediately handed it to me. We do have an ordinance 5.52 that covers food trucks, so we're welcoming her to start that process.
That's it from the City Manager? All right, he's always short. I like it. No, I just praised you for being short.
Well, you know, I was doing a really good job, and she's in my ear.
Yeah.
Dora's going to say a couple of things about the animal care facility.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents. So this weekend, we all celebrated the grand opening of the Animal Care and Control Facility. This facility, I'm going to kind of talk a little bit about what this facility is and what this facility isn't. So this facility is set up as a waypoint to assist our residents with reuniting pets that are lost within the community. We've contracted with the County of Riverside for a number of years and found the need to bring this service back in, so we can provide the opportunity to bring these pets to the local shelter and reunite them with their owners if they're microchipped, rather than having our residents go all the way out to Thousand Palms to pick them up. We have a couple of great programs that we're offering to the residents that I just briefly want to talk about. One is a licensed amnesty program. So we encourage you to contact our Animal Care and Control if there are any animals, pets that you have that you would like to utilize this program for. All of the pets in the community need to be licensed within the City of Desert Hot Springs. So if you contact Animal Care and Control, they can walk you through that process. And then additionally, we're also offering free spay and neuter vouchers for up to two animals per household for our residents. The goal here is to get compliance from a licensing standpoint, get all pets spayed and neutered, so that, you know, we aren't continuing to increase populations of pets. And then, in the event that they are located, going through this process, it does involve vaccinations and microchipping and that sort of thing, so we would then be able to reunite the pets directly with the owners. So operating hours are Tuesday through Saturday, 9:30 to 5:30. Administrative staff is available on Mondays by appointment, and we're excited and happy to serve the residents with this new service.
And during a ribbon-cutting, you should never lead off with, "Who wants to adopt a pet?" when they're not adopting pets. And that was me. No, I wanted to make it very clear, this is a waypoint at this point, but the future of Desert Hot Springs is really focused on bringing animal care completely back into the city. Councilmember comments? Anything from staff? Any other interest staff? Okay. Councilmember comments? Who wants to go first tonight? Mr. McKee?
Mr. Betts.
Oh, Mr. Betts, you're in first.
Not a whole lot going on since the last council meeting, so just run down some items quick. I did take a drive down Palm Drive and noticed the line at Taco Bell is still around the block. I don't think I've ever seen anything like it, but if anybody wants to open up another restaurant in town, I'm sure you'll do quite well, based on that opening. I'll be attending the Airport Land Use Commission on Thursday, traveled to Los Angeles with Councilmember McKee for the Southern California Association of Governments. They're still convinced that we need to all do vehicle miles traveled on our vehicle registration. I don't know if that train is just running down the highway, and I don't know if we'll ever stop that one. Attended the, sat in on the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Executive Committee. They had some issues coming up there that affect our city. Probably be seeing that in the news soon. Maybe the mayor will give a quick rundown on that during his time. But anyhow, spent time with my planning commissioner, driving around the city, looking at different issues. He's got a big, long list, so I think he's going to make a really elaborate presentation at the next planning commission meeting, so if City Manager or staff's wondering where that came from, I'll take responsibility. Have a lot of residents contact us, say, "Hey, what about this building? Why is it sitting in this condition so long?" And, you know, I've been looking at this building for a while. It needs to be cleaned up and fixed up. But I just want to let everybody know, it's not an instant process that that happens, but I've talked to, on a couple of them, where I've been, had residents continually ask me about them. One is a property on Anajah, and another one's down on Sycamore. You know, staff is aware of it, but there's just a legal process you have to follow. I stopped and talked to the city attorney. I'm confident that they're working on that. But if you see these things out there, call and bug us. Let us know. We're trying to get the city cleaned up, make it look nicer in areas where it's not perfectly pretty, and so we'll get those taken care of. Speaking of perfectly pretty, I went and took a tour of the Flamingo Hotel, and that is going to be one fabulous property. If you can see what's going on there. I mean, the inside of the restrooms, the gentleman who does it has a tile and marble business. And I'm looking at this tile on the wall in the bathroom, and it had to be Italian tile, because something, I'm not a tile expert or marble expert, had to be Italian marble. So it's just, when you see it, you're going to be blown away. This is just going to be the most beautiful, spectacular property when that one gets done. I see we have the speed readout on Palm that's gone in, so now you can check your own speed as you're traveling.
We should memorialize after the Eastmans, who kept us honest on this, right?
I thought they'd be here singing our praises for getting that done, but anyhow, so you can see that you're speeding, if you're speeding. Starting to do some work on seeing what it would take to get a signal at Pearson in 62. For some reason, one cropped up at Dillon in 62, and I don't know that that was the most useful as far as our residents are concerned, but...
I use it all the time.
Oh, you do?
I do.
Well, there you go. Anyhow...
Pearson was in our city, so that's... They want us to pay for it.
Oh, okay, well, we want one on 62, but we want them to pay for it. And then the only other thing I'm working on early stages of a community bicycle ride, be a short little 17-mile ride through our city, and see if we can draw some in just for that.
10 mile.
Well, you know, the nice thing about this...
It's a long ride to...
Well, no, it's really, I'm going to make the ride, and if I can make the ride, anybody can. And what's really nice about it is it's all downhill.
Oh, okay.
And then, we're going to meet you, where you can take your bike and put it on a trailer, and we'll drive you back. So this is going to be, hopefully, we'll get a lot of people out there. So there'll be some more details on this by the next meeting, just starting to put it together, but if anybody wants a nice, easy, leisurely downhill, all downhill bike ride, we got one coming, so there you go.
I guess I'll handle the uphill portion, then. It's been actually a pretty busy couple of weeks. The staff and I had a meeting with several cultivators to talk about some of the infrastructure issues that we have. I think that we're putting together a plan. I think that sooner or later is going to come to the council, hopefully, if the cultivators especially fall in line and think that it is a good thing to do. I attended the homeless committee. We discussed some things revolving around services specifically for CVRM and Martha's, and whether the West Valley program could reimburse CVRM and Martha's for people from the West Valley that are using the services. And I think that's a continuing issue that's going to come up, because it is rather touchy, considering we've got matching funds from the Desert Healthcare District, which is required to stop at Cook Street. So there are some things that have to be figured out. As, I've had two meetings with Desert Healthcare District, the first with Carol Rogers, Lisa Houston, Ms. Eastman, and the Chief of Police. And specifically, what these two meetings revolved around initially were 5150s, which are the psychological hold program that the police department usually uses to ensure that people that are a danger either to themselves or to other people are received some medical attention. Usually, it does a regional hospital, which is the reason that Desert Healthcare District is involved. The thing that's interesting to me was the chief provided some statistics on it. I'd been talking about the fact that the, a year ago, the police sent 350 people to Desert Regional Hospital in one year, and thought that that was a lot. This last year, it's actually gone up, and it's gone up to 428. So in the last two years, 778 people have been taken by our police department to the Desert Regional. This is a problem for everyone, because that's very expensive. It takes up a lot of the police time. It takes up a lot of their time at Desert Regional. So we're working on putting together programs to hopefully deal with the problems before they become 5150s. The other thing we attached to it was a problem that as council people, we see all the time. One of the things we have that's a really positive thing that our present city manager does is a comprehensive report about what's going on in the city government every week. And we thank everybody that's involved with that. But once you start looking at that, what you start perceiving is there is a massive problem that our police have to deal with, and it's domestic violence. Most of the arrests that take place, I think I can be pretty clear, every week are domestic violence-related. And obviously, we have a poverty component, and there are other things. But what we've started discussing is the possibility of having a person assigned to the police department, paid at least partially 50% by the Desert Healthcare District, that would try and be proactive about the problems. Most of the time, these are situations that accelerate, meaning initially, the neighbors will call and the police and say, "There's an argument going on. There's a real problem here." What we're trying to look at is if we had someone that had the ability to put people into programs that exist already, and not have that accelerate to the point that someone hits someone else with a frying pan or slugs somebody, that we can cut down a lot on that domestic violence issue, which is probably the most dangerous thing our police department deals with, because they come up into situations where one or both parties actually could have been, could be armed. So it's something every week that I look at, and again, I am amazed at the professionalism of our police and what goes on as far as that's concerned, that they have a lot of restraint in situations where people are very emotional and could be, in other circumstances, that bad things don't happen. But Desert Healthcare District and various people in the city now are starting to look at this, and hopefully, I can bring some stuff to the city council in the next few weeks. I just wanted to talk about that a little. Also, attended a Painted Hills Middle School discussion, where we discussed about issues that regard to the school district. One of the things we talked about there specifically is how they draw districts, and the districts that are drawn specifically for the middle schools. I don't know that people that are not attached to children in this town understand why there are such problems that we have with kids, as far as middle school kids, but a lot of it revolves around the fact that the boundary between Desert Springs and Painted Hills Middle School is Palm. It's not, it's a north-south boundary rather than a east-west. And what this does is, this means that someone that lives in Aguadulce, which is literally a block away from Desert Springs, actually has to walk to Painted Hills, all uphill, probably three miles, somewhere around in there. It causes massive numbers of tardies and everything else every day. It also is the same thing for people that live above Mission Lakes Boulevard. They have to walk clear down to Desert Springs. So it doesn't make any sense to me, and we complained about that. There were also some discussions with Rancho de Oro people at that point, and I'm sure that we'll talk about that later. I attended Taste of Soul, as usual. It is a great event with our African-American community at the high school. If you haven't gone to it, when it's announced next year, please take a look at that. There's a lot going on, lots of presentations, lots of music, lots of food. It's a good thing to go to. Also, attended the Sebag Executive Committee meeting, and there's going to be some discussions about that over the next few weeks. And finally... And finally, well, two things. SCAG, SCAG is now going into the RENA program again, which is the program that tries to ensure that low and very low-income housing is built in various communities. There has been, over the last ten years, Russ, somewhere around in there, your whole time on SCAG, a move from poorer communities to make sure that our circumstance is taken care of at the state level. And it continues to be a problem. I can go into a lot of depth, probably for an hour and a half, but since the mayor's gonna start kicking me under the table here, I won't. The issue is, from my standpoint, that most of the regulations revolve around trying to get higher-income communities to build low-income housing for the people that work there. The laws that have been put in place are actually used against poor communities to force them to build. Because what happens is, it's very expensive to build in a expensive community. It's cheaper to build in a poor community. Therefore, all the nonprofits that are involved use the laws that were supposedly set up to force more wealthy communities to build low-income housing are used against a poor community. So we're probably gonna talk about this forever over the next few months, anyway. It is a big deal in our future when we're really trying to change the city. We wanna do our part as far as low-income housing, but we wanna do better than what we're doing now in some of the other areas. Thank you to the staff for the animal care facility. We started this discussion two years ago when Paula Terrafi and Walt Meyer and I got together at Casablanca and tried to put together a program to upgrade what we're doing as far as animal control's concerned. I'm happy with where we are, the fact that we're gonna have an animal control person on seven days a week, 10 hours a day. The fact that we're gonna try and get animals back to their owners rather than taking them to Thousand Palms. And I think it's gonna be a program that, in the long run, we're gonna like. So that's all I have, and sorry about that.
Never apologize. Ms. Parks?
Yes, I hope to be a little shorter. Okay. It was a very light two weeks, or two and a half weeks. On the 21st, I attended the SEVAT Board Meeting at Cathedral City Council Chambers. I also attended the Rotary Volunteer Appreciation Meeting. On February 22nd, I attended the tribute to Eddie Johnson. It was a great event. It's already been talked about. February 28th, I attended the Staff Appreciation Dinner for the Seroptimus House of Hope. On March 30th, I attended the Desert Hot Springs Neighborhood Group Breakfast, and this was at Dillon's Roadhouse, and the grand opening of the animal campus. It was, it's a magnificent facility. If you have an opportunity to go down, take a look at it. I was blown away by the number of residents that showed up to see that on that day. The parking lot was full. That night was the Rotary Comedy Night. I've always gone, however they sold out. I've always bought my tickets at the door, so I couldn't go. But it's very, very good that it was sold out, and all those funds go for scholarships for Desert Hot Springs students. That's all I have. Thank you.
That was quick. Ms. DeValle?
I'm gonna be even faster. I attended a Regional Access Project Board Meeting, the patriotic musical salute to veterans that was organized by the county. And I'm glad to see that Jeff Horton, the mayor's liaison, veterans liaison, was recognized at this event. I also attended the Community Action Partnership and the Desert Hot Springs Family Resource Center graduation from the Tech for Success Program. So 14 families went through the program. They went through some workshops on different topics like financial literacy, you know, raising a money-smart child, conflict resolution. And after six workshops, they got a certificate and a free laptop. And it was a nice laptop, too, it was an HP. So, yeah, they got a free laptop. And one of the women in the audience was actually thinking of starting a business, and so she was gonna be using that laptop for that. So I made sure to mention the MicroLum program to her. And then, as far as the food trucks, wow, I'm excited. I'd love to see food trucks out here. And then, Eddie, I am so sorry I was not there. I had to cover a dinner in Riverside that day, but I was with you in spirit. Congratulations, you definitely deserve it.
She sent her boss to give you the award.
There we go.
All right. Few comments, I did attend the Day Festival, I do honor Eddie and the dignitaries that were there. It was a great event. It was the very first one that the board for the fairgrounds had put on, and he was the first to be awarded that. So each year, they're gonna do a veteran.
In his name and lights.
Yes. And then this, the next day, the next morning, our police chief was awarded, along with two other residents in our community, Jeff Horton and Donna Poizina, the Unforgettable Heart Award, which is an organization that helps raise money for families that cannot afford to bury their child or cremate their child after they die. So this is a great fun. And our chief, and again, two other members of our community, were given awards for their partnership with these, with this organization, so it was fun. And our deputy chief is here tonight because our chief is back east with his first grandkid. So you know he's not shy, he's already on Facebook announcing it, so I thought it was okay to say it. But we wanna congratulate him, he's not listening to us, probably in bed by now. What time is it back there? And then, the CV Link had its first ribbon cutting of its first stretch, of two-mile stretch. Cathedral City was the very first city to put money towards the CV Link, which is along the Wash. If you know where Essina is in Palm Springs, just off of Visegino, it starts there. So it's actually a small portion, but it's actually in Palm Springs. And then it goes up the Wash two miles to Ramon. And it's, it, the one fantastic thing about it, whichever direction you sit on it, whether you support it or don't support the CV Link, was the engineering and the design of it. When they put the plans up and they showed a picture of what the concept was gonna look like, and then they showed the finished product, man, almost exactly the same. So it was very nice. So we attended the ribbon cutting for that. I wasn't able to stay for the whole thing, we were able to stay for the first 15 speeches. I think there was 24 more, something like that. It was, there was a lot of people talking. I was honored to sit at the Desert Valley Disposals Table for the Mizel Senior Center Gala. Mizel Senior Center controls our senior center here in Desert Hot Springs, and they have a gala each year, which the money goes towards their Meals on Wheels program. So we were able to sit there and join them for that event. I did sit on the Executive Committee for Sebag, kind of a few things going on there. One was a joint powers agreement that was being changed or asked to be amended. And they were adding in some tribes and some other amendments. I abstained from the vote. Five cities voted no, and six voted yes. And there's some controversy over that that might come forth in the future. We'll keep you updated. The traffic synchronization program throughout the Coachella Valley is underway. I sit on the Transportation Committee and the Executive Committee, and we finally, after years of talking about this, I think we were talking about it years before I was on the committee, they're finally gonna implement the engineering on this and get moving towards this. And I think the section that we received grant funding from in Desert Hot Springs, for Palm Drive, will actually be one of the first sections to be synchronized in the Coachella Valley. They're gonna test their equipment on ours, is that correct, Annie? Mr. Porres? They were gonna test the equipment that's going to be working on the synchronization on our first section of lighting?
Yes, we will be the first ones on board on the master plan.
So that's gonna be, not being test dummies, but it'll be good for the Coachella Valley because we'll actually be able to test some of that equipment on a short stretch before they get it along 5111. And then, I gotta give kudos to staff on the Animal Care Center again. I think most of council said here, we were able to cut a ribbon. We were able to move forth on the vision that a lot of our members of our community wanted to see, which was bringing animal control back into our community, finding ways to get the pets back to their owners without having them go straight to Thousand Palms, and be able to, hopefully someday, have adoption here and other things. It's the old animal shelter that we had, and they renovated it, and it's beautiful, and did a fantastic job. So thank you to you guys. And then, it was sad note that Tony Rivera, who was owner of Vet Leaf here in the community, my age, had a medical condition and passed away last week. They had a memorial service for him today. Unfortunately, we weren't able to attend because of council meeting. But it was just, I wanted to remember him for what he did. He wasn't here long in our community, but he did have an impact because he did, he was a person that didn't have a problem giving advice and moving forth on a business here in Desert Hot Springs, and he will be missed. All right, with that said, I will be moving on to the administrative calendar. Item number four is a resolution to continue hearing date to annex and assess 259 homes, commonly known as Rancho de Oro, to the city of Desert Hot Springs Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number Two, from April 3, 2018, to May 15, 2018. Our community development director, Daniel Porres.
Mr. Mayor, before we get started on this item, I have homes in Rancho de Oro, and so therefore, I have a financial conflict and can't participate in the discussion, so I will be recusing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Porres, he's off the dais, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is regarding the Rancho de Oro annexation. I just wanna give a brief summary of what has happened and why we're here. At the last meeting, we, the city council approved the resolution of intention and set the public hearing for 6:00 PM for April 3, 2018. What that public hearing was for is for the voting for the Rancho de Oro residents, which is a subdivision located on the north side of Mission Lakes, between Sonora and West Drive, and just south of Jalisco. What it was is, is in, back when the development was built in 1992, there was 250 homes, 259 homes that were built. No assessment district was formed at that time, and no HOA was established at that time either. The perimeter landscape was completed, majority of it was completed. At some point, the city took over the maintenance of that landscaping. The city staff and council has worked various years and has had various meetings with the residents in figuring out a permanent solution to fund the perimeter landscaping. One of those solutions was the annexation into Landscape Maintenance District. Currently, the city has over 23 Landscape Maintenance Districts and 23 Drainage Assessment Districts. What those assessment districts and maintenance districts do is they assess each property owner a certain amount of funds that are then used to maintain the perimeter property or the drainage systems in that actual residence for the entire year. What the city and the resident are trying to do is move forward an annexation for that community, Rancho de Oro, so that the community has a permanent assessment for the maintenance of the landscape. At the last meeting of city council, we established the date and the resolution intent of April 3, 2018, at 6:00 PM. We would like to give additional time for the residents to review their ballots and ask additional questions. What this item is proposing is a resolution that would move that hearing to 6:00 PM on May 5, 2018. The location is still the Carr may Center here, and nothing else has changed from that. With that, staff has recommended the adoption of a resolution of the city council, continuing the public hearing date for the hearing to annex and assess property to Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number Two, annexation number 18, Zone 19, and to levy assessments to such properties to fiscal year 2018-19, from April 3, 2018, to May 15, 2018. Second, because my staff report, glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Porres, you said May 5th, did you mean 15th?
15th, I'm sorry, yes.
Is there any questions of city council to staff? I'll take any public comments at this time. This is your opportunity to speak to the city council. Your three minutes will begin when you state your name. Second call. Final call, public comments are closed. Mr. McKee?
I just wanted to talk a little bit about what's going on and why we expanded the timeframe. We were in a position that there was a significant amount of confusion as far as what was going on because the ballots went out prior to an information notice going out. So a number of people were perturbed about that. I think that there are some other discussions that are taking place about the amounts that we're gonna charge in this district. Let me reaffirm something I say all the time. We're in a position every year that the city council can set amounts up to the maximum amount that's passed by the people that are in these districts. What that means is, if a large group of people from Rancho de Oro or anyplace else want to come in and say, we want to change the landscaping, we want to change the frequency or whatever else has to do with the district, we can do that every year, and we look at those every year. So I think there is more flexibility in this than people give us credit for. You never believe that a elected official actually would reduce a taxing amount or a fee amount in this case. But we actually do every year, and I think that's something that I would put forward to the people at Rancho de Oro, that there is a certain amount of flexibility as to what we can do here.
I have nobody else in the queue, entertain a motion.
I'll move to...
Adopt the resolution?
Adopt the resolution, thank you.
There's a motion, a second, any more discussion? I see none, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. May I call Mr. Betts back in the room? In the room, I'll announce the item. Approval, number five is the approval of the Mission Springs Water District, initiating formation of Assessment District Number 17 of the Mission Springs Water District. Our deputy city manager, Lou Graney?
Good evening, mayor and council members. For this item, I'm gonna invite up Shane Spicer, who is the managing director of Spicer Consulting, and he's gonna tell you about this item.
Welcome back, Shane.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council. The item before you is a consideration for the adoption of the resolution allowing the Mission Springs Water District to consider formation of Assessment District Number 17 for the proposed sewer system improvements to properties within the city's boundaries. This is a requirement pursuant to Streets and Highway statute that would request that an entity, such as the Mission Springs Water District, has to get permission from the city to form such an assessment district. The proposed assessment district is located in two zones within the city boundaries, Zone A being at the southeast corner of 16th Street and Palm Drive intersection, north of 12th Street, and in Zone B, which is north of Hacienda Avenue, east of Mountain View Road. The Assessment District is proposed to finance public improvements for sewer facilities. There are an estimated 426 parcels proposed to be included in the Assessment District. And the city council would need to approve the resolution prior to the Water District taking any action publicly by the board, which is proposed to be on March the 19th. And with that, I would like to answer any questions. And also, John Soulier with the Water District is here as well to answer any questions.
I have a question for Mr. McKee.
I just wanted to say I support this, specifically because one of the problems we have in the city is the fact that we have various septic systems in rockier environments, and Zone B is one of those. I sit on the Hoteliers Committee as a representative of the city council. There is nothing more important from the city's standpoint, I think, than protecting the water that we're known for. And I think this is gonna be a positive thing as far as making sure that we don't have problems with septic tanks not working in that area. Thank you.
Mr. Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I too appreciative of Mission Springs Water District's efforts to bring sewers to our city, especially the way they do it that holds the cost down for our residents. In other cities, you see huge bills paid by those who have to make the connection, and somehow they work their magic there to keep that from being a reality in our city, a harsh reality. Now, this is gonna involve various, are we at the stage where this is gonna involve encroachment permits by the city? Is that what we are agreeing to? I see here in the staff report, it says initiation of proceedings and the performance of work by Mission Springs Water District. So is this the only time the council's gonna weigh in on this?
This is the opportunity for the council to weigh in on the ability for the district to form an assessment district with regards to the nature of the improvements that would happen through the construction process.
Okay, do those construction processes come back to us, or should I just raise my concerns now?
The construction process would be an encroachment permit, which we would review. So if you have concerns, you can voice them.
Okay, so I'm gonna go with that. On the encroachment permits, what I would like to see is we do somehow a better job on how the paving is put down. And I'm gonna try and explain this as clearly as I can, but imagine when you come up to a limit line, a stop sign at an intersection. Sometimes we have the paving stopping just short of that limit line, and not stopping just short of the limit line, but one section... just short of the limit line, but one section going this far and another section going that far. Or we have just half of a street paved and the other side not paved. It just doesn't seem to make sense to me not to go all the way through if it's another 10 feet, and I understand the water district is going to say, "Well, that costs money," but it just looks hodgepodge the way, especially the last section around 8th Street was done in Cactus and Nacatillo area. It just doesn't look right to me. The problem with a half street, and you can see this before, we went through and paved our streets, some point in time, somebody said, "Wow, half of the street is so bad, we're going to go pave it." Well, when you first put down the paving, if one pavement is five years old and another one's brand new, well, as pavement degrades, it goes like this, and all of a sudden, it really drops off quick. So pretty soon what you have is one side of the street looks great, and the other side looks very rough, or it's just not...just the difference becomes very noticeable. I would like to see our staff work on them when they do the encroachment permit, that for sure, we square off the intersections to eliminate that from happening again, but two, that we do the full width of a street rather than just, you know, a trench down the middle, and that if there's opportunities for our city to engage in this process by saying, "Hey, we can get a little paving done, the equipment's already here, the job's already going, maybe we put a little extra money in and we get some paving done," where, you know, if you don't have to move the equipment in, you don't have to, you know, the labor's there, the equipment's there, and all this is basically essentially the materials, additional materials on the job, you know, maybe some ancillary costs, but I would just like to see us do a much better job on the paving part. So if this is the time to raise that, and I'll never get to see it again, then I raised it.
Just to add to that, we will work whenever the encroachment permit moves forward. If it moves forward at that point, then we definitely will make these notes, and we'll let Mission Springs Water District on making sure they do pave all the way to the edge, pave all the way to the median, and extend it to as much as possible. We have tried to partner as much as we can, and we'll make sure we continue to do it.
And that concludes my comments.
Yeah. Yeah, this item is not for the construction portion, but when that happens, we will make sure that it gets done the right way.
And I also want to compliment Mission Springs Water District on, you know, where they set up an area where they're using it as a staging area for equipment, and they've gone back and have cleaned those up. Anywhere they've disturbed as much as possible, they're doing a good job now of cleaning up those areas, and that's appreciated. They're not leaving a mess behind when they're done. Just, those roads fixed, and we'll be good. Okay, thank you.
All right, well, you had Mr. Vice President from the board in the audience, and you had staff members in the audience from Mission Springs Water District, so you've heard from our council member. All right, any public comments on this item? This is the time of public made comments. If you come to the podium, you'll have three minutes. They're piling up behind you, Shane. Last call? No? Okay, with that said, I have nobody else in the queue, I'll entertain a motion.
Move staff recommendation.
If no further comments, please vote.
And thank you for the much larger exhibits, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. City Clerk?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Item number six is the resolution setting forth certain regulations pertaining to dispensaries. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Members of the City Council. The item that you have before you tonight is a resolution setting forth regulations pertaining to dispensaries. Many, well, a few years ago, the city council deemed that 19 persons could apply for marijuana dispensary conditional use permit. Those 19 people are actually, in the staff report, just for your reference, three have withdrawn, which leaves 16 people with a right to apply, and the city was a while back kind of looking for direction to see kind of what are we doing with those 16 people who have that right to apply. I believe that eight or nine are currently up and running. Don't quote me on the exact number, but it's something like that. And so the resolution before you tonight does is it pretty much does two things. It sets that number at 16 people with a right to apply, and then there are also some rules and regulations with respect to the transferability of that right to apply, and it prohibits that transfer. But there are some other items in the resolution, one of which that I will mention. It also states, the resolution also states that if a city council-approved listed dispensary is lawfully operating, the dispensary can, of course, move locations in a manner as provided by law, which in general would require a new conditional use permit. So what the resolution does is memorializes what the city council spoke about in a study session that happened back in October of this past year. I'm available for any questions, and with that, I submit to you.
Open up for questions to staff, and then public comments. Start with Mr. McKee.
I've already asked this question, but I'm going to ask it again because I'm still unclear. According to this ordinance, from what I can see, if someone has a dispensary license, they can't sell it at all, because it doesn't say after a dispensary is opened that you can at that point sell it. It just says that hereby deems the subject dispensary applicants are non-transferable, and that's all. And my point is, yes, you can move it, you can do all sorts of things, but there's nothing that explicitly says the dispensary has to be up and opening in a physical location and then you can sell it, which is, I think, what we were talking about. And from what I can see in this, that is not covered.
If you look in the recitals, the subject dispensary applicants are actually, it's an actual defined term, and so it talks just about the applicants themselves. So the intent was that if you just have a right to apply, that right to apply is non-transferable. That said, if the city council would like to clarify this, I'm happy to go ahead and suggest, you know, some wording to actually clarify that.
I would suggest that we need to do that, because I may not be a lawyer, but I watch all sorts of law shows, so I guess that makes me really qualified to do this.
I object.
But I think it needs to be made clear, because from my standpoint, it looks like you can never sell it.
Remember that when it gets to the portion of the motion that can memorialize that if the city council chooses to do so. Mr. Betts?
I would second that sentiment on somebody needs to be able to sell their business once they're up and running, and I think this is just to present, prevent people from selling their position in line. I know there's some strong sentiment on this council regarding the number of dispensaries, that some people thought there should only be 16 and not go to 19, and I don't personally have a problem with 19, but I think in light of the very strong sentiments down at that end of the dais, that I'd be willing to go along with that as well, so. To just, not your end, just one next to you. I'll be happy to acquiesce on that, and limit it at 16.
Is that it?
Yep.
All right, open up to public comments this time. You may speak. Once you come to the podium, state your name, your three minutes will begin. You may. Now, let me, Mr. Silver, let me just say this. You did have three minutes to begin the meeting.
Yes, I did.
It pertained to your direct business. These comments need to be directed not in those same manners, because you've had your three minutes.
I'm aware of that.
Thank you very much.
As I'm looking under 17.180.40 marijuana dispensaries, and one, light manufacturing facilities. Would I qualify as a light manufacturing facility, which if I abide by all these rules, would I qualify as that for having one, no odor whatsoever shall emanate from the building, distribution of marijuana of any kind is prohibited?
Mr. Silver, I think you're on the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're actually talking about the, we're on item number six. I think you're discussing item number seven.
Okay, I was just going under marijuana dispensaries?
Yeah, and the next item is the discussion regarding taxation of manufacturing. Are you, I mean, you're kind of caught in the middle. I think I understand where you're going.
I think so.
Go ahead and finish your comments.
Okay, so in order to be approved, I mean, I'm not sure where I would, what category I would fall in for my business as a manufacturer, if I would be under a light manufacturing facility under marijuana dispensaries, which I would not be selling to the public.
Mr. Silver, if you meet with staff, we can answer all your questions, and we can move past this for you.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, we have your information, we'll contact you, we'll answer all your questions.
I think it's a little above what we're trying to get at today, and it might be better if you meet with staff and try to get those answers from them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Scott, go ahead and state your name, and then your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. My name is Scott Harlow, and I just have some brief comments in line with council member, Mr. McKee. I think there are some other transfers that have to be dealt with in this regulation as well. As it currently reads, and even with an amendment for selling, if a dispensary owner should pass away, can he not leave his business to his spouse or to his children? And there's some involuntary transfers, such as filing bankruptcy, automatically that license becomes owned by the federal trustee in bankruptcy, which would be interesting to see what he did with it, but I think there's other transfers that have to be regulated. Because quite honestly, I'm thinking, you know, if my father had an ongoing business, a dispensary business, and it was worth a million dollars, and he left it to me in his will, and all of a sudden, I can't get it, because even if I otherwise qualified, I think we'd be inviting litigation, where I would want to, you know, litigate my entitlement to that million-dollar asset. So I think there's more than just sales need to be covered.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Second call. State your name, your three minutes begin.
Hello, my name is Marie Scott. I work with Desert Harvest Development and their legal representation. First, I want to say thank you for everybody's hard work developing these regulations. I know it has not been easy for really anybody involved in the process. What I do want to say is, the last time that this item came up for discussion, it was deferred to this meeting that we're at now, and we had just submitted a letter that stated our position on the matter, which is just to oppose the specific limitation to the 16 subject applicants that were there. So I just wanted to remind you guys of that correspondence, and that is all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Final call. All right, closed public comments at this time. Go back to city council debate and/or recommendations on moving forward. Ms. Savala?
Move staff recommendation with the amendment that Joe mentioned, specifically outlining the fact that if you have a business that's currently operating, that you are able to sell it, and then perhaps also that you can pass it down to your next and kin or whatnot.
There's a motion on the table, do I have a second? There's a motion, a second, do I have any more discussion? I see none, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Item number seven is discussion regarding taxation of marijuana manufacturing. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council. This item before you is an item that the city council had suggested that it wanted back, excuse me, that it wanted back for consideration. The item is asking the city council to provide direction as to the taxation for manufacturing. The staff report kind of goes into the different chapters of the municipal code that actually talk about taxation, and with that, unless the city council has any specific, well, I should say, unless there's any specific questions on the staff report, I would just assume open up to a city council discussion, since this was an item that the city council wanted to bring back.
Thank you very much. I have first in the queue, Mr. Betts.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think we might be able to shorten this agenda item discussion on this one, because I'm, my read of the tea leaves up here is that this one's probably not going to change. Maybe it's gotten votes more favorable to the proposition, but I don't think, last, I don't know, I'm just speaking, hope not speaking out of turn, but I would like to make a motion to...
Before you do that, I will come back to you to make sure you're the first person to make a motion. Do you want to open up a public comment first?
Let me finish my comments. I think we could just, I don't think there's a sentiment up here to tax the marijuana manufacturing. That would be my guess, and we could probably move this along pretty quick. The, I don't want, we're not going to move it along quick, everybody's hopping in, so. I tried. Okay, then I'll just wait.
Mr. McKee, would you like to make comments before a public comment?
Really quickly, I also don't support this. I think that there's no manufacturer that I know of that pays something like this, which would be from a manufacturer to a retail, almost from a wholesaling operation to a retailing operation. I think in the history of the country, it's been tried several times. It's called a value-added tax that's usually put in place, and my position remains as it has been. I want as much manufacturing in Desert Hot Springs as possible, so I, again, don't support any taxation on manufacturing. Thanks.
Ms. Savala? I can, if you want to come back after a public comment, sure. Okay, Ms. Parks, do you want to wait till public comments? And my comments before public comments are, I haven't changed my position either. I did think the sentiments of the city council before, the city council was not to tax extra space unless it was actual grow. Office space, bathroom space, we didn't really talk about manufacturing at the time, was not to be taxed, so. I don't know if I'm going to change my position tonight on any of the debate, but as of now, I have not. So we're going to start with public comments first. Anyone that has, would like to speak to this item, may speak. You'll have three minutes, once you state your name.
Hi, Andrew Milks, Brown Dog. I think my question might be, it has nothing to do with manufacturing, ironically. On the list of comparisons of local cannabis taxes, it lists Desert Hot Springs, and then it says delivery area, and it says none. And I'm just wondering what the delivery actually covers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll try to get that answered for you.
Hello, Ryan Fingerhut, High Road Consulting Group. I represent a number of people in the process of getting approved for manufacturing here in Desert Hot Springs. I just wanted to speak a little bit to, I understand that the sentiment, and I'm glad I'm supportfully, the idea that the manufacturing tax shouldn't be, that a value-added tax shouldn't be put on to people who are largely already paying the tax at the cultivation level, and then would have to pay an additional tax to change their product type. Further, I would like to point out that when the original tax was put forward on the ballot, there was a specific provision in there that said that any increase in the tax or change in the scope of the tax would have to be put forth again to the people of DHS so that they could vote on it. And I would like to point out that if you review the language of that text, it refers that particular tax. There's a lot of language in there that refers to retail, retailers, specifically dispensaries, collectives. It specifically says that it applies to people who are selling for casual or recreational use, and I think that if the council were to move forward with that, that you should consider that it may be seen as a change of scope, and in fact, you would have to put it to a vote to the people of DHS. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Hi, everybody. I'm Jason Elsasser, president of CVCAN. I'm going to kind of make it quick. I think it's amazing to see the cohesiveness that we have between our city government and the industry. Desert Hot Springs put themselves on the map in 2014 as the first city to embrace legalized commercial cannabis activity before the Mercurus was even drafted, so. The city currently is making some very progressive moves that we find very exciting and we are very engaging. So it looks to me that we have the three votes we need to push this through, so this is more or less kudos to everybody on the council. As cities come on and the tax structure becomes ultra-competitive, you have a lot of other cities that are coming and being very aggressive on their tax rate, so I believe moving this forward in the current direction is a very good move. Thank you.
Any other speakers tonight? This is second call? Final call? All right, closed public comments this time. Ms. Savala?
So I'd like to start off by saying that I think, I think everybody on this council is supportive of this industry. I think the conversation that we're having tonight is specifically pertaining to the taxation of manufacturing. I think the conversation that we're having tonight is specifically pertaining to the taxation of manufacturing. Given the ordinance that was voted on by our residents, per our city attorney, we are able to charge manufacturing. Now, this wouldn't be a double tax. It would simply be a tax on a, on a segment of, you know, that specific act of manufacturing. So I think there was some confusion on behalf of the council when we originally thought, oh, okay, that, you know, it was going to be a square-footage tax. That's not how the ordinance was written. The way that the ordinance is written, it allows for an up to 10% tax on wholesale gross receipts. Now, when we look at the tax structure that was provided to us by our city staff, where they conducted an analysis of the manufacturing taxation across the board throughout the Coachella Valley, everybody's charging a percentage on the wholesale gross receipts for manufacturing. Yes, they are. I see some heads shaking over there. I can guarantee you, it was verified by our city staff. I, in fact, myself, called a few people to make sure that some of these numbers were correct. So, you know, I can see here Cathedral City is charging .40 cents per one gram of concentrate and .40 cents for each cannabis-infused product. And that's Cathedral City. The City of Coachella is charging 2% on wholesale gross receipts. And the City of Palm Springs is charging 10% on the wholesale gross receipts if you have a permit. If you do not have a permit, then it's a 15% charge on the wholesale gross receipts. Now, I'm just here to say, I'm not, I don't want to tax anybody out of business, not at all. I just want to also make sure that when we're up here, we're also thinking about the residents. Because the residents are not here today to negotiate for themselves. We're here to represent them in this negotiation. Now, I know for a fact that we are service and solvent as a city. Yes, we may be doing better, but we're, we're still not where we need to be. If we were, we wouldn't have had to pass, repass those taxes on your user utility and your parcel tax for public safety. So to me, it just seems a little confusing that we just sent this out to a ballot and we had you vote on it to pay into those public safety fees. And now we're turning around and just saying, hey, we're going to be the only city that doesn't collect any kind of funding on the wholesale gross receipts for manufacturing. Now, 10%, I will be the first to say, I think that's too high compared to what everybody else is charging, except for maybe Palm Springs here. But I'd say something like 2% would be fair. That's my personal opinion. You know, I, I know that in the future, I'd love to see, I'd love to see us be able to provide everything that we can for the residents of Desert Hot Springs. And I feel that cutting, cutting this revenue source before we've even collected anything from it, I think is a little premature. I think we can always come back and cut them later, once we see how we're doing. You know, maybe we, we're, we collect a lot on the cultivation. And if that's the case, maybe we don't need to collect on manufacturing. But what I'm saying is, why are we, why are we eliminating our safeguards to revenue streams that we can later say, hey, you know, we might not need this? But I just, I don't feel comfortable as a City Councilwoman representing the parents that are taking their kids to school every morning, that are driving out, working really hard to make a living, the kids that are currently going to school that need better sidewalks, that need better infrastructure, that need better parks. I just, I cannot in good faith say, I'm going to cut this revenue source right now before even seeing how this all unfolds. This is something that we can talk about again, once we see how it goes. We don't even know, we don't know. So what I'm saying is, let's leave the safeguard there for now. We can always come back and amend this, once we see how we fare. But right now, we don't know, so why jump the gun? I'd rather be cautious upfront and be generous, once I know, hey, look, it's, it's all going well and we're rolling. We don't need to worry about having money for our general fund and to provide services. And at that point, I'd say, hey, great, let's do this. I just, like I said, I don't feel comfortable with that. I know it's the will of the majority of the council to do this now. And, you know, it's, it's going to move forward, but I have to at least express how I feel about it. I know everybody doesn't feel the same way and everybody has their own reasoning for that. That just happens to be my reasoning. I would, I would suggest that if it is the case that they, you know, the council does not want to tax, then I would suggest that we use that as an incentive for the cultivators that are cultivating and manufacturing here locally and provide them that tax incentive, so that they don't have to pay for the manufacturing. I would feel more comfortable supporting that and using it as an incentive for the people that are here cultivating and manufacturing locally.
Thank you, Ms. Parks.
I totally agree with Councilwoman Savala. You know, we're, we're not in a position to overlook money's coming into our general fund. This is not a lot of money, especially with the amount of money that the cultivators are, are making. And to say we're making too much on the, on the taxation of the cultivation, I think is, is overstepping. So, and, and I would, I would also contemplate a 2% rather than 10. But I, I'm hoping that one of you three guys gets some common sense and goes with us ladies.
Ms. Parks has always been very, very tactful with her comments. As she's been on the council for many, many years, she's gotten less, but we still love her. Mr. Betts?
I've been sitting up here with Councilwoman Parks for a long time, and that was a good one. You did very good. I hadn't heard that one before, so it's always entertaining to-
Well, listen more closely.
Yeah, whatever plea of desperation come along. Anyhow, sorry. I've never been one to say, just because everybody else does, it's, well, heck, let's do that ourselves. So that argument just never holds water with me. You can go study every city in the Coachella Valley and what they're doing, and I'm going to decide what's right for our city. With manufacturing, a determination comes along that these are good-paying jobs, better-paying jobs, technical jobs, people with money, disposable income, shopping in our stores, making the line longer at Taco Bell, staying in the hotels. Well, we've seen it. You can see the economy in this town is growing. You can see that disposable income. You can see the jobs that have been created. But that's the argument for-
Show me.
Manufacturing, and that's the argument for not taxing yourself out of an economy. So whatever money you think you're, you're missing to City Hall, our residents who we care about are actually getting that in their pocket. And then we can collect our taxes through the expanded economy. But my point has been and remains, as one of the speakers said, that we are not legally able to expand the tax that was put to the voters. And in that tax, and I know the city attorney's gone through some gyrations to try and figure out a way to justify this or to at least say that it could be done if the council wanted to. But that's not my read of the ordinance. It's not other legal opinions that I've received and that apparently the speaker earlier has sought and obtained. We are very specific in what we enumerated in that original tax. And manufacturing was not one of the items that can be taxed. So I'm quite certain if this council were to try and, and impose that tax, then there's going to be some sort of challenge to it. And basically, it says you can't expand the tax and you can't increase it. These other cities that are listed here put through tax measures themselves to taxes. The voters approved it. That's how it was presented to them, and that's what you have. So the discussion is not about, I mean, this discussion is about what's legally allowed. And we're not cutting a revenue source. The source was never available to us to begin with. And notwithstanding all that, it is very good policy. And I've installed five factories, and I have never once had a per-square-foot tax applied. And we get away with it on the cultivation and, you know, I'm sorry, but we like the revenue. But on this one here with the, with the manufacturing, it's just not legal to do it.
Mr. McKee?
It's sort of an interesting discussion from the standpoint of many municipalities give away massive tax breaks to create jobs. And here we're in a circumstance where I understand my colleague's position, but part of what we're doing as far as suggesting this with manufacturing is to focus manufacturing in Desert Hot Springs and bring jobs here by having that advantage over the other cities. It's what we discussed the first time we were here. I'm not trying to cut revenue. I'm trying to get better jobs. I'm trying to give people more disposable income. So I don't look upon it as being sort of a heartless situation where we're trying to reduce money coming to the city. The second thing, and I think this, this is something that's missed. People in all businesses focus to be low-cost producer. Because as the market is manipulated over the next few years, the people that are going to be successful are the ones that have the lowest base cost. What we should be doing is helping our manufacturers to be in that position so that the jobs that are created here stay here and don't disappear because we're in a position that, that they disappear because they're at a disadvantage as far as their cost structure is concerned. Again, I don't know of any circumstance in the entire country where you have a manufacturing person paying this kind of tax. And I don't know what the justification, other than holy cats, we can get it, and I think there's a lot of money in this. If we convince Mercedes-Benz to come into town, would we charge them a 10% tax on the cars they were trying to sell to their dealerships? That would be absurd. So I, I understand the circumstances far as wanting more money for the city. My perception is, this is not where we should get it.
And I'm going to make a few comments, and then I'll go to Ms. Savala, who's in for another round. The manufacturing space within the cultivators, and I could be wrong, as I've been told, is anywhere from 300 to 500 square feet for small extracting areas. Is that fair enough to say? Middle or higher, maybe up to 750 to 1,000 square feet. So if you've got a, we have one being built out there that's 80,000 square feet, and they use up 1,000 square feet of that for manufacturing. We're losing taxation if you were to tax that space. But are we having an incentive, that you alluded to, Ms. Savala, to keep business here? Because we do have, if you look at a chart that was put together by our city staff, we do have most, all the cities in Coachella Valley charging for manufacturing somehow. We have cities around us that we compare to that are charging for manufacturing. There is one city that's not, but I'm not going to tell you who it is because you can't go anywhere. But we have 59 CUPs that have been approved in our community for large-scale cultivation. And only about, maybe if we're lucky to see it, and this is only a guesstimation by me, and please don't hold any staff or myself to it or the City Council, but I'm guessing if we'll be lucky to see 25 fully operational over the next five years. And that's because people have found other opportunities, like large warehouse spaces that have come available in, in large industrial areas. So we have to have an incentive. Mr. McKee and I tried to put together an incentive for local hire about a year ago or so, where if they hired 20% here locally, we would give a dollar off their tax to keep them, keep unemployment down. We lost that battle. We're going to try again someday here soon, before he leaves. But there has to be some incentives to certain businesses. Maybe this is a bad example, but Amazon does not go into an area unless they get incentives on taxes. So are we losing something? Yes. But are we gaining businesses that are going to stay here long-term? My view is yes. It's not the same opinion as my whole City Council. I think this is a fantastic debate. We can be on different sides of the issue. But I truly believe it's a double taxation. I believe that you're taking a product out of one area, you're putting it into another, and you're double taxing it by taxing it again. Just my opinion. So from that point of view, we're going to go around again. I have Ms. Savala in the queue. Oh, I'm sorry, I had one more point, is that we have to remember that the state is going to, has our taxes. Eventually, the federal government's going to have its taxes. Do we tax them out of business, or do we lower the taxes at that time? Why not make it an incentive at this point to keep the business here and be a good partner? Sorry, go ahead.
And I don't think anybody is arguing about having jobs here in Desert Hot Springs. You know, that's, that's not a point of argument. I think the fact that they're being built out there right now, that means that the jobs will come with those businesses going into business because they need employees. You know, I, I can also recall that we did actually have, when, back when we used to require development agreements, we required that 20% of those employees be local hire. Now, in order to ease the process of the cultivation applicants and the projects that were coming through, we did away with the development agreements. That was a way to make sure that people were going to get like, that were going to get a job if they were local, at least 20%. At this point, you know, now we don't, we don't have a way to, to enforce that or require that anymore. So when we're talking about, you know, local hire, I, I mean, I sure hope that there's local hire. Whether or not the people here locally have the skill set to do what needs to be done in this very, like, you know, specified, like, industry, you know, I don't know. I hope that they do have training programs and that that goes, that goes through. But we, as a city, don't have any way of, of enforcing a local hire. So I, I don't, I don't know what, what to say there. I think the jobs will, will come when the businesses are, businesses are in operation. We had a way of enforcing that, now we don't. And then as far as the, the manufacturing is concerned, you know, once again, so if we want to make sure that manufacturing is happening here locally, so then provide the incentive to the current people that are out cultivating that also want to manufacture. You know, that, I, I feel that that's a great incentive for the people that are here locally that are doing everything they can to support our local economy. And I'm all for that. If we're going to provide this as an incentive to the people that are cultivating here, I'd be all for it. But to just do it like this, I, I don't feel comfortable with that. You know, as, as I mentioned, you know, it's, we're not a servant, we're, we're service and solvent as a city. We're, we're nowhere near in the type of financial standing that we should be as a city. We have a long way to go. It's an uphill road. I'm just saying, let's be cautious upfront. We can always reanalyze and bring, and do this once we know where we stand.
Thank you, Mr. Betts.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
Okay, notwithstanding the discussion over whether or not we can legally expand or not legally expand the, what is taxed under the original ordinance establishing the tax, I'd like to make a motion that it is the position of this City Council that manufacturing space, for both recreational, medical, what's the terminology I'm looking for? Will, space that is designated and utilized for manufacturing will not be taxed, at the per-square-foot tax.
This is on grocery receipts.
And what? And no per 10% gross receipts tax will apply to manufacturing.
Well, then that, then that's-
Well, let's get the motion out first, and then we'll come back for debate.
So that there be, there be no taxation of manufacturing on the floor space or the gross receipts for space that is designated and utilized. That's a distinction there.
Go ahead and push your button. Is there a second? There's a motion, a second discussion now. Ms. Parks?
Yeah, now that makes it double taxation. You're removing all taxation on manufacturing.
But it's double untaxation.
Yeah, double untaxation. No, I don't agree to take the, the tax off the manufacturing.
That's on the manufacturing.
I know. I know exactly what you're doing.
The tax comes at retail on the manufacturing. What's manufacturing gets taxed at the retail?
It's part of the space of the facility. It's part of the space of the facility. You've got the first 2,500 square feet, I mean, the first 3,000 square foot at 25, the remainder at $10. That's it. That includes the manufacturing space. You don't remove that.
Well, under this-
According to yours.
Under this motion, it's movement seconded.
Well, it, it doesn't make sense. It's not, it's not feasible.
Ms. Savala?
You know, once again, so it, it just doesn't make sense. You know, we are taxing, we're taxing other things. Like, you know, we're taxing cultivation, for example. for example, right? So we're basically saying, okay, if you're cultivating, we'll tax you. But if you're solely manufacturing, we will not tax you. So out of the businesses, okay, if a cultivator is cultivating and manufacturing, I'm fully, okay, I will support that local person that's making that huge investment in our community because we know that those cultivators need to be successful, okay? We need them to be successful. I'm all for supporting no tax on those people that are here cultivating locally as an incentive for them to be here and for the investment they're making here. But that, what this is saying is, if you're, the only thing you're doing is out there, you're going and you're, all you're doing is manufacturing, we as a city don't see any type of, of tax revenue coming from them. Yet we're collecting from other, from other businesses that are, that are dealing with marijuana products? It just doesn't make sense. Why would we exempt this one manufacturing, like, enterprise? I just, I don't understand. Now, the reason why, why we're looking into it is because this is, I, I just, I don't, I, I don't see it. Like, I, I feel that, you know, it's, as an incentive to the people that are cultivating here, okay, let's do that. But to not do it at all for the people that are, that are also, that are not even cultivating, that are, that don't have any other investment in the city, and we're just gonna say, cool, you don't have to, you don't have to pay taxes. But you know what? Those cultivators that are making those huge investments, we're gonna charge them for like, you know, everything they're doing over there. I just, I think that if we're gonna do this, we should only do it for the people that are investing in our community by bringing cultivation here and investing in that.
Thank you.
Quick comment, Ms. McKee. So for manufacturing cell phones in the city, eyeglasses, water bottles, plastic cups, paper, we don't tax it. But if it's marijuana, for some reason, we gotta tax it. That's basically what it comes down to. Nowhere in this country, if I go manufacture anything else, anywhere in this country...
Mr. Betts, I'm gonna let Ms. Zavala respond, but we've got it. We're just, now we're just having a bigger debate on bigger issues that we probably shouldn't get into.
Okay, all I'm saying, anyhow, I'm ready to vote. I was ready to vote a long time ago.
You kept it going. No, I'm joking here.
No, I'm, I'm trying to... Another comments by the city council, please vote.
Mr. City Clerk?
Motion passes with Councilmember... Motion, motion passes with Councilmember Parks, Mayor Proten, Zavala opposed.
Thank you very much. Item number eight is the award professional services agreement for the Desert View Avenue sidewalk project. Mr. Porras, is this you?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Desert View sidewalk project is a sidewalk improvement project...
Ladies and gentlemen, there's still a meeting that has to go on, so if you need to discuss anything further, please step outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. It's, it's a sidewalk improvement project where there will be installing new sidewalks, new curb and gutters, new crosswalk along Desert View Avenue from Burbina to Palm Drive. Uh, this will be done on both the north and the south side of the street. In 2017, the city submitted an application to receive SB 821 funds from Riverside County Transportation Commission. On September 27, 2017, the city was notified that the city received two, the city will receive $293,000 for this project. On November 21 of 2017, the city council authorized the city manager to execute an agreement between Riverside County Transportation Commission and the city to receive the funding of $293,000 from SB 821 funds. These funds, in that action, there was also noted, the city council also authorized the staff to move forward with completing the engineering for both the north and the south side of the street. Since then, the city has completed and released the request for proposals for engineering services for this project. From the request for proposals, the city received four proposals from four different firms. We use the Caltrans selection method for professional engineering services, which means that the, each proposal was independently reviewed by a different evaluator based on specific criteria. After each evaluator reviewed it and we tied up the total points, we then opened the total cost for each proposal and compared those as well. Based on that criteria, there was three evaluators for the four firms or the four proposals. Out of the four proposals, Omnis Incorporated was ranked first, High Tech was ranked second, Ludwig Engineering was ranked third, and KOA Corporation was ranked fourth. And the table for the exact amounts is shown on your staff report. After the proposals were evaluated, staff then opened the cost proposals of each proposal. And the proposals are shown as Omnis has $43,650, High Tech $39,000, Ludwig $138,159, KOA $55,540. Before this, when, when staff was creating the project or identifying the project, staff came up with the city engineer's estimate of about $44,790, which is about $1,000 over the number one selected proposal. Based on proposal evaluations and the total cost, staff found Omnis Incorporated to be the most qualified consultant. Staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to execute professional services agreement for the Desert View sidewalk project with Omnis Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $43,650 with a contingency of $4,365, which is 10%. For any additional work as approved by the city, to bring a total budget number of $48,015. That concludes my staff report. I'm glad to answer any questions. And just to make, make a note, the request proposal is attached to your staff report and as well as every single proposal that we received. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Porras. I'm assuming public comments on this item. I see none, I'll close public comments. Mr. McKee?
Yes, thank Mr. Ma, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question because most of my questions have been answered already in my meeting and also with questions I've submitted. The major question I have left is this, who were the three evaluators?
It was our project manager, our city engineer, and our contract engineer.
How many people worked directly for the city and how many people were contract employees?
One directly to contract.
Did any of the contract employees have any attachment to any of the firms?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Betts?
All right, so we're, this is looking at both sides of the street, correct?
That's correct.
Good, wonderful. Thank you for that effort. That's great.
All right, I have nobody else in the queue. I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion. And a second on the screen and more discussion. I see none, please vote.
Go sidewalks.
Motion passes. Motion passes, unanimous.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is award of professional services agreement for the ATP Cycle III Palm Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project. Mr. Porras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the item that I discussed...
I'm sorry, I got interrupted. Where does, this extends all the way up to Palm?
ATP is...
This, this only goes from Camino Aventura to Two Bunch Palms Trail.
Oh, good. All right, so you bifurcated it. Thank you.
This, this item is regarding the, there's a few Palm Drive improvement projects, so we're trying to identify them by their funding source. So this is the ATP Cycle III Palm Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project. This one is on Palm Drive between Camino Aventura going north to Two Bunch Palms. This project will install missing sidewalks, ADA ramps, ADA driveways, new crosswalks, uh, new crosswalk striping, I'm sorry, uh, new buffered bike lanes, new streetlights, and a new raised median on Camino Aventura, I'm sorry, Camino Campanero. Uh, there'll be flashing beacons to bus stops. There'll be additional pedestrian and bicycle safety signages throughout the corridor. The, the project is estimated to cost $965,000. That was the original estimate for engineering, environmental right-of-way clearance and construction. The city submitted an application to receive ATP Cycle III funds and the city was awarded those funds back in 2017. And in July 2017, the city submitted a request to the California Transportation Commission to substitute the ATP III funds with Senate Bill 1 SB funds. The reasoning was that the ATP Cycle III funds were not available until 2019, fiscal year 2019 to 2020. The SB 1s funds are available for fiscal year 2018, 2019, which means that they're available in three months. We did receive notification that the city was approved for that request. Therefore, city moved forward with the request for proposals for engineering design. We released a request for proposals for engineering design for this project and we received two proposals from the consultant firms listed below. Similar to the previous staff report, we completed the Caltrans method of selecting professional engineering services in which evaluators evaluate the, the independent proposals without looking at the cost based on specific criteria. After the, after the proposals are evaluated, they then open the costs and then evaluate the costs, see how fair they are. Based on that procedure, the two consultant firms that were evaluated, the first place was Omnis Incorporated, second place was High Tech Consulting. Then the costs associated with each proposal, Omnis was $68,000, High Tech was $67,500. The original project engineering services were estimated at $101,000, so there is a savings based on the original engineer's estimate of about $30,000. Based on proposal evaluations and total cost, staff, staff found Omnis Incorporated to be the most qualified consultant. Staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for the ATP Cycle III Palm Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project with Omnis Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $68,000 with a contingency of $6,800, which is 10% for any additional work as approved by the city for a total amount not to exceed $74,800. Same as before, you do have the request proposal in the attachments and both proposals in the attachments. That concludes my staff report. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Betts? All right, do you have any public comment on this? I have nobody standing, I'll close public comments. Mr. Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Page 136 of our packet, you see a drawing here and it shows project limits outlined in red, and I'm gonna guess that this isn't precise. We're not taking away half of the homes in that row of Vista Montana, correct?
That is correct. It was just, it's just a scene, it's just a area locating where exactly it's gonna go, but it doesn't tell from Camino Aventura to Two Bunch Palms.
Okay, it's just, that's a general representation. It's not exact. Now, my question though is, we've got a couple of these mobile home parks on the west side of Palm that are really crowding the line. And so that's some kind of a challenge for you, correct?
Crowding the line, I'm sorry.
They're, they're, I mean, they're very close to the road. There's one wall there where I got...
Yes, yes.
So are you looking at different, maybe creative solutions to how we might be able to effectively get some more real estate there?
We have discussed with the owners of the mobile home park in the past, we are gonna try to explore, see how much we can get for that intersection. We currently did have to have a minimum ADA sidewalk, which we can complete. Unfortunately, if the wall remains, we would not be able to exceed more than the four and a half required by state. But we will engage, once we start doing the design, and see how much right-of-way, if we can acquire and what we can do about it.
And I would like, again, I'd like to say is that I understand we're working within the limits of the funding, but maybe there's a funding source somewhere else and something that's been long recognized is built too close to the road, we might be able to correct. So if there's something else that comes back and says, hey, you know, if you guys wanna fix this, it's gonna cost this much, but we can do it, I would love that staff would come back to us because while we're doing the work, it's the least expensive time to take care of this. And you may find somebody that's perfectly amenable to, to that type of encroachment. So if you could put that into your work on this one, I would love it. That's all, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Porras, I have a question for you. On the crossing areas like Camino Aventura and Park Lane, I, I see that Camino Campanero is gonna have a school crossing area, which is important because kids travel there, but there's also a large contingent of kids that live in a mobile home park at Camino Aventura that cross the road in that area. And then again, we have a park off of Park Lane. Would it be the opportunity now to enhance those intersections with better crosswalks or are we just enhancing the areas with lighting?
Currently, we don't have a controlled intersection at Aventura. The only controlled intersection is on Campanero. So that is where we're proposing to add a raised median as a, a safety stalling area or if you're not able to make it all the way across, you're able to stand in the median to be safer from the vehicles. We could look into adding maybe a traffic signal at Camino Aventura if it's warranted. I don't know the cost on that, but we could definitely look into it.
Maybe, maybe Camino Aventura and maybe Park Lane. I, I like to see future, I mean, if, if it doesn't warn a, a crossing, a, a stoplight, maybe a crossing light, sort of like we've done in the school areas before. It's just I see a lot of kids travel. I just travel that road quite a bit for work and, and I see a lot of kids coming out in those intersections, trying to travel or cross, so I think it's something we need to look at in the future. I know it's probably not in the scope right now, but it's something to keep on your radar.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Uh, Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna sort of go on from where you are because one of the things I get all the time are people talking to me from Sky Haven, from the other, Whispering Sands, from all these other mobile home parks about the road itself. I mean, I don't understand how we set speed limits. I know we changed the speed limit in front of the high school to 45 miles an hour because what I was told was that's because everyone drives fast there. And if you go for, if you get through the light at Two Bunch and then clear Kmart and in the Pizza Hut, it's a racetrack. And people are immediately going up to 55, 60 miles an hour and crossing in front of both, uh, Park Lane, which is a lane, I agree with the, the mayor, is, is a problem. And, but also, what, what do we do to ensure someone in Sky Haven or Whispering Sands or somebody like that can actually get out of the, of their parks? I think we need to look at this in a little more detail than what, what we are right now as far as trying to put sidewalks and ADA ramps and everything else down because the, the problem is how fast people are gonna be driving through here. We can put all sorts of things on the ground as far as painting them and everything else, and we can put the radar up that we finally got up south of Vista Montana, but it does very little to change people's driving habits. I mean, we just had someone that it ate in the morning when, when people are going to the high school who hit an art installation so hard that weighed 15,000 pounds that it landed in one of the lanes of the traffic on the other side. We've gotta do something for traffic calming, I guess, is what I'm saying specifically in this area, and I would think along sections of Pearson too. And I'm obviously not a professional or I would be cutting the speed limits down a lot more than they are right now. But I think we need to work with the police department and traffic engineers and everything we can to reduce speed because no matter what we paint, no matter what ADA ramps we put in, if someone's driving 60 miles an hour and clocks someone, uh, there's not gonna be a good thing happening as far as I'm concerned. So I need, I think we need to expand what we're looking at here a little bit and, and move a little further. Thanks.
Ms. Zavala?
I just wanted to shed light into a question that I asked the city manager earlier today, and that was whether or not those ATP funds would be available. If we, in essence, don't use these, but we use SB 1 funding for the project, and in case you're wondering at home, they will be transferable. So in essence, they're basically using the SB 1 funding to fund this upfront since they won't be getting the ATP Cycle III funds till later. And then they'll be, once they get those ATP funds, they'll be able to use that to kind of reimburse ourselves for using our SB 1 funds.
Just something really quick, Mr. Mayor, she just said SB 1 funds. I want to let you know that part of the battle over RENA and housing is, there's been a bill submitted to the Assembly that would take SB 1 funds away from cities that did not meet the RENA goals.
Ms. Mayor, just to address a couple of questions for traffic calming. There, part of this project, we are what we call traffic calming, choking the lanes. So we are adding four feet of bike lane on one side and making the lanes narrower. There is a mentality when the lanes are 14 or greater, as they are in the freeway, you tend to go a little bit faster. So we are choking the lanes in this area to make them a little bit less wider, which will hopefully slower, slow some people down. We're also adding flashing beacons to every single bus stop in both directions to kind of warn the drivers that there is pedestrians, uh, there is bus, buses going in and out of these bus stations and, and hopefully with the lighting, we will improve it. But we'll definitely look into a little bit more as to what we can do for safety on, on this area.
Yeah, I think some of the comments are made towards the Sky Haven, Vista Montana parks where we have more elderly residents trying to pull out in the traffic and maybe there's an opportunity to put some, some lighting in those areas too for traffic calming because it is, as, as Mr. McKee said, a speedway a lot of times. Mr. McKee, are you back in? Mr. Betts?
Yep. I was just gonna suggest to the city manager, we could save a lot of time in this meeting tonight if I could just sit down with the engineer and draw the whole thing for him. The bumpouts on the safe routes to schools?
Yes.
I think those have made the situation more dangerous at those intersections than...
This one doesn't have any bumpouts, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Parks?
Yeah, I was just thinking, relative to what Mr. McKee said, if in fact... Thank you. If in fact, um, the SCAG is, is contemplating something or the Assembly is taking SB 1...
If in fact, the SCAG is contemplating something, or the Assembly is taking SB One and moving it somewhere else, I think we oughta put in our bid for the SB One funds now before they change the regulations and for, for this additional lights or whatever at Park Lane and Camino Aventura.
All right, I have nobody else in the queue...
Or maybe stop signs.
I have nobody else in the queue at this time. Thank you for everybody's comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Move staff recommendation.
Ms. Zavala, you have more comments?
I was gonna make a motion.
All right. All right, but that's...
So we're not adding anything to the motion?
No.
I think he's taken our comments and, and, you've taken all our comments and, okay. And I don't think we can, because we can't afford anything else right now until he finds a funding mechanism, but...
That's what I'm saying, the SB One.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Item number ten is the County Service Area One Fifty-two, CSA One Fifty-two, Budget and Proposed Assessment for Fiscal Year Eighteen-Nineteen, our deputy city manager, Luke Rainey.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, we're gonna have Danny Porres come up again, talk about, from an engineering perspective, how this affects the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Luke. County Service Area One Fifty-two, or we call it CSA One Fifty-two, is a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Stormwater Program, long for MPDES. The, there's a National Clean Water Act that the city must comply with, and in nineteen ninety-one, the county assessed or set up a County Service Area One Fifty-two to fund the requirements of the National Water Quality Act. The, the city is required to comply with certain requirements that the state and the federal level place on each local agency. Some of the requirements are, we have to complete on a regular basis inspections of industrial facilities, commercial facilities, all construction activity, to make sure that they're all complying with our National Clean Water Act, make sure they're all falling sweepy, make sure they all have their permits in place. We also are required to maintain all of our stormwater facilities, which in our case, we just did two weeks ago. We have, we cleaned out over a hundred and sixty-eight catch basins, where we pumped all the, anything that was clogged in there and cleaned them all out. We also clean and remove all debris from retention bases on an annual basis. We have over fifteen retention basins. We also complete street sweeping, where we clean off all the debris from our curbs and gutters to eliminate any of the debris flowing through our, our natural waterways. All of these required items are a state requirement, a federal requirement. Therefore, CSA One Fifty-two is used to fund some of these. On page one ninety-seven, you'll see a budget of what we, we spend annually, and it's estimated to spend and cost a city about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars per year. Based on this, the city established a, a benefit assessment unit, which is a fee that they assess for residential, commercial, industrial properties. About four years ago, or three years ago, we raised it from two dollars, ninety-eight cents up to ten dollars, which is a maximum. Since then, it remained at ten dollars, which is common for all the surrounding areas. What does that mean? That means that residential lots are assessed about ten dollars a year. Non-residential lots are, lots are assessed about eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents a year. Commercial and industrial lots are assessed about eighty-three dollars a year. That comes out to a total of a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, which are restricted funds that the city utilizes to offset the cost of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System program, which is costing the city a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The remaining funds are subsidized through the general fund. Staff is recommending to assess the benefit assessment unit of ten dollars per, I'm sorry, CSA One Fifty-two at ten dollars per benefit assessment unit, which was the year's previous, and it cannot go any higher than that. Therefore, staff is recommending to adopt a resolution of the City Council, making its findings and establishing the rates for County Service Area One Fifty-two, and fund the city's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, MPDES permit. That concludes my staff report. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Any public comments on this item? I see nobody coming forth. Mr. McKee?
I've got two sort of unrelated questions that has to do with this. I've been getting questions from people about street sweeping and the fact that we need to do something to get especially grass growth and things like that taken care of, and I think we talked about this in a meeting. Have we, have we talked to our landscape people about going through the city streets and killing all the weeds that are coming up through the edges and cracks?
Yeah, we have. Matter of fact, that is a regular complaint we get up in RDO, and so it's something that we address, the actual city crews address that on a regular basis, plus our, we changed our landscape maintenance folks again, and we're, they've been given instruction to follow up on that as well.
Thank you. And the second question, the, on the third bullet point, it says, "Construction and business inspections." Would that include grease traps?
Not grease traps. Grease traps is through Mission Springs Water District, but it would include all the, if there's any traps used from the catch basin to the street. They're not grease traps, they're a little bit different, they're filters that we use. We only have one facility that uses them. And during construction, they're required to have concrete washouts, they can't dump their concrete in the dirt, they're required to have the soap fencing around, they're required to have track out to make sure all the dirt doesn't go into the street. All those items get inspected on a daily basis, so that's what this funds as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Betts?
First, I want to say, Mr. Porres, you have a knack for taking a complicated subject and making it very clear and understandable, so thanks for that on this one. Good job. The next thing is, did you convince the people who mandated this program to pay for it in total?
That's an ongoing issue back and forth with our, our regional and our, our water board, but yeah, it's...
Okay, so we aren't getting funding for this, we're just being told to do it?
That's correct.
Okay. And I have noticed that the weeds coming out of the cracks seem to be not as noticeable now, so somebody must be doing something. It's still terrible where you are? Wow.
It's because they don't want any special treatment around a council member's house.
No, I think the entire city should be done, but I, I just, I hadn't seen that that was a huge problem anymore. I would have noticed it, believe me, so...
I'll say, in the heights is beautiful.
See, there's another council member that needs to take care of it.
Anything else?
No, thank you, I got enough trouble now already.
All right, I have nobody else in the queue at this time. I entertain a motion. Is there a second? There is a second. No more discussion, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, there's no items pulled from the consent calendar. Any future items, agenda items that you'd like to discuss now with the city manager? All of you have an outlet towards any public comments from the net where you weren't able to speak at the beginning of the meeting, would like to speak now, items on the agenda. See nobody coming forth. We are adjourned until the next meeting, which is?
March.
March twentieth. Thank you.